With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rich, Alkar, Liggins, Paul, Wayne Scott, Brandles, Behrger, Ballot?
Here.
Okay, first item to present agenda. Need a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular session of June the 6th and 20th, 2023, and approval of closed session minutes of June 6th and 20th, 2023. Make a motion that we accept it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The approval of Bill 7423 to 718, or 7423 and 71823. Question or comment?
Do they accept the bills as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is good. Schedule guest Dan Besendorfer. Committee reports, finance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee met tonight to talk about the current purchasing policy. The city administrator inquiry had reached out to other municipalities and received some of their policies. So we were reviewing that to incorporate a lot of their ideas and comments into ours. We also looked at the credit card policy, which is a new policy that we're wanting to implement. But since this was new policy for us to review, we're going to table this for now and convene again on August the 1st at 6 o'clock to discuss it further.
Board and commission, park board?
The park board met. We did have a quorum. Not to be redundant when we go into unfinished business here, but our main topic of conversation was about the old swimming pool building. At that time, as Mike indicated in his notes to us, the park board, I told them that a question arises at council as to what their opinion was. And their opinion had been to do what the city felt was best. But at this time, they took a vote and it came up at the time we had the meeting. Their vote was three to demolish, one abstaining, and one to repair the roof. That changed a day ago when one of the board members came to me, said they wanted to change their vote to, instead of demolish, to roofing it. So we're kind of at 50/50 on that with them, but we will be going further into that here in a few minutes. Planning commission, we had, since our last council meeting, we have had a meeting about a couple of things here. First one is the RV park. Our vote at that time was four to approve and send it on to council, one to deny sending it forth. And then on the chicken and rabbit issue, it was unanimous vote to approve that for a change in our codes and things. That's where we're at on those two boards.
Unfinished business, old swimming pool building.
Well, as you know, this has been quite the topic for some time. And this year's budget, we had budgeted for $14,000 for tear down. Since then, it's been going kind of back and forth on what to do with the building itself. I don't know if there is a right answer or a wrong answer.
All right. Well, Mike, if you don't mind me interjecting something here, I'd like to ask Trent, on the bids, Trent, do you have any information on the bids for re-roofing?
I haven't.
You got it? Okay, I should have waited.
I have a question about the bids before we discuss.
Yeah.
I went through, I had noticed that in our notes, and I went through my minutes, and I didn't see where that was brought before the council to solicit bids. And I thought that has always been the protocol, that before bids are solicited, that it's brought before the council or their approval.
Yeah, I thought, well.
I didn't see it in any minutes.
I was pretty sure we, well, I don't know, I don't keep the minutes, but.
No, we solicit bids all the time for, for equipment and, and like I said.
But when you solicit the bid, is it council, aren't they aware of that and they approve it?
Well, they approved the choice of the bid, of course. So we would have more information on what the cost of roofing it was instead of throwing out $14,000.
Well, I guess my question would be also is that, yes, we did budget for it and we had sent it back to the Parks Committee to decide what they wanted, if they had any suggestions. At the time, it went back and forth, they didn't have any suggestions. And now I was writing down what the, I guess we had another vote as to what they wanted to do, but then someone else comes back later without the other members being present and they change their mind. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, when we all went down and looked at it, it was more or less implied. We talked about tearing it down as opposed to putting a new roof on it and trying to find a viable use for it. And it was kind of brought up just between all of us that perhaps we should get bids and see what a roof would actually cost at this time.
Yes.
And see if, and kind of go from there. I don't think there was ever a formal.
Well, the formal vote, it was just. Yeah, just that we needed, that we needed more information.
When we went there, you guys decided to go ahead and get the bids.
Yeah, we just, you know, so instead of just saying 14,000, we would have something in writing from a few contractors, this is what it would cost. So we'd have more information, of course. So.
So you have the bids now?
I have the bids, yes. And the low bid on this was at eighty. It was $8,500.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's true.
When we looked at the building, most of us agreed that the building is structurally sound, it's in good shape. But the problem with it is we don't have any projected use for it, you know, storage. I hate that everybody's got too much storage. Just let's, we'll put it over there in the old pool, if you like kind of stuff. It's too bad we can't find an organization or somebody that can make use of it. And then, you know, it would be a good thing for the community. As, as right now, just sitting down there, it deteriorates as weeks, months, and years go by. I don't know the right thing to do either, from what I can see right now. I would, I would be inclined to vote to tear it down. But it is a structurally sound building.
Right.
We're going to use it for it. We've got buildings sitting all over.
The city does?
That we're paying.
The city has buildings all over that, I mean, I'm just asking.
They have a high school building, for example.
Right, I mean, that's.
They have insurance, song, repairing the heat and cooling, different things, doing maintenance. And they're, they're of no use to the city. They're just holding the bucket.
Right. I see what you're saying about a building, yeah, that high school building, that's a whole nother beehive right there if we want to get going on that.
Have you estimated the cost of the main hours to tear it down?
No, I have not. We would probably do it in-house.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's clearly not something that's on their daily schedule, so, you know, that would delay other projects or whatever, so I don't know if there's an estimate of how much that would.
Trent, do you have some numbers on what amount hours would be to in-house demolish that?
It wouldn't take.
It wouldn't take long, you say?
Wouldn't take long. What's that mean, a week, two weeks?
Uh, it depends availability of contractors and things of that nature. The majority of it's going to be correct. Unless you're going to do something, someone that's a manufacturer.
Yeah, if it does go to demolish, we need to make the decision on whether we want the floor of it taken up to or what, of course.
But I thought, you said it could be used to store chemicals and stuff for the pool and everything, right?
Yeah.
Chairs, chairs.
Right, right. So it would be used.
It would be used, yeah. Trent and the city administrator have made that perfectly clear a number of times that there is a tremendous need for a place to put things, is how I'll put it, because I know the storage word is not received real good. So anyway, but, all of this said, we all understand we need to do something with it. I mean, the community's tired of looking at it the way it is. I don't know if any of you have had anybody complain to you about the way it looks in making our park system down there look. But, you know, people are getting tired of looking at it and wondering, okay, are you going to do something with it or just tear it down and let's make a decision? Is what I generally get from the community on that pool building. So, tonight, I've told people, sorry, Denny, don't mean to stop you, but I've told people that I would push to see the possibility of making a final decision on it. Somebody's not going to be happy, but nobody's going to take it personal. So we just need to move some of these balls forward.
Well, you've got, you've got a building there that they sit there to use for, they can use it for storage if we put a little money in it. It's a solid building. If you, if you put a roof on it and then a group or somebody wants a different use for it in the future, it's there.
Yes.
If you tear it down.
It's gone, yes.
If you tear it down, the floor is not going to be worth keeping. You know, they say, well, you know, we can put another shelter on it. There's sewer lines come running up out of it, there's drains in it, everything else. If you're going to tear it down, get rid of it.
Take it completely out to the dirt.
You know, I'm probably not going to have a vote anyway, so, you know, it's up to you all.
All right.
But we do need to get it off.
Yeah, we need to move the ball forward, get it off the, off the agenda and do something with it. So anyway, I make a motion that we take a vote on it. If that's what we're supposed to do. And I vote, I make a motion that we keep it.
I second it.
And roof it.
I second it.
So you want to keep it and accept this $8,500 bid?
Yes, yes, sir.
Was that the only bid that we received?
No, we received three.
For the record, can you talk to all three of you?
Yes, that would be great. Okay, pyramid roofing at a price of $10,816.82. Tailor-made exterior in the amount of $11,627.80. And Algar.
Alga, Alkar?
Thank you. Paint, Pro, and Custom Renovations in the amount of $8,500.
All right.
Get it?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, so the motion was that if we're going to roof it for the $8,500, go on the bid. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Raise your hand so we can count them. Okay, opposed? Okay.
Okay, so, so that means, so we can move this ball forward, the motion failed. So I would like to make a motion that we demolish the building. Because we've got to do something with it. There's no point in leaving it open-ended right now. Because if we don't make a final decision on it right now, it's just open-ended like it's been.
If we have a motion to demolish, do we got a second?
Yes, you do, Liggins.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay.
All right. Now Trent, I know I've asked you this before, but just to make sure that we're doing something and getting these things moving, what do you see as a possibility of how quick that can be done? Or do you have any comment on that at all right now?
I don't have a comment, so I don't know.
What was that, sir? I can't hear you.
I'll know when I'm told to do it.
You'll do it when you're told to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Mike, what do you?
I'll make the work order up.
Make the work, okay. There will be a work order made out tomorrow to demolish the old swimming pool building. Thanks, everybody. Well, it's too, hey, we got to do something. We've got to make some kind of decisions. I mean, that's the way I feel, guys. I don't know. You know what I mean.
And we have to be happy with our decisions, like you had said. You know, we're not going to please everyone with everything, but that's what makes us collective partners up here. We all have great minds in order to do this. We feel it's best for our community.
There we go. Okay, RV park.
Okay, so this is under old business at this point in time. If you remember correctly, the last episode was that the council had sent it back to the planning commission because of the additional changes in the, in the application. The commission did meet on June the 13th of 2023. And the commission approved the recommendations as well as added a couple of criteria and moved it back to council. I believe that you all have a, the documentation from the planning commission and the certification of recommendation.
Yes. And Mike, if I could make a comment here, is that permissible at this time? At the last planning commission meeting where we discussed this, a few people came forward to express their discontent with one of these RV parks being inside the city limits. And I'm not going to mention names, but a comment was made by a certain individual, whether it's rumor or not, that there would be another one coming across 49, on the west side of 49, at the overpass area somewhere. So why do we need another one in the city limits? My answer to something like that with the amount of understanding that I have is, a lot of concern about this RV park is what it's going to look like as time goes by and what it makes Butler look like when people come into town. Well, if there is any kind of a plan for somebody to do one outside the city limits on the west side of 49, that's out of the city's control. That will be representing the city of Butler, whether it's in the city limits or not, and we have no control over what they do. So why not have one if we're going to have it? They can do theirs anyway over there, but if we have one in the city limits, we can control through this zoning variance what happens. And through our code enforcement and law enforcement, we can keep an eye on it. And besides that, one goes in outside the city limits, we're not going to get any tax money off of the rentals for the spaces. Of course, they'll still come to town. I'm not trying to shade this. One way or the other, I want us to look at it openly. The tax money we won't get would be for the rentals of the spaces, but those people will still come into Butler to eat and maybe buy a few things. But if we have one in the city limits, we get the tax revenue from the spaces plus what they spend in town. So whether that's rumor or not, I just want it out there that it was mentioned. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
So I have a question that really doesn't involve this property, but has the other property that they own ever been written up for code violations?
Not that I'm aware of.
Wouldn't there be some code violations there on the other properties that they own?
There were a few things pointed out that needed to be taken care of, and all of those have been addressed.
They have been taken care of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We are back here. I'm Craig Shaw, Shell Houston, Specials Architect.
Mr. Jeff Patel, owner of the RV park, also has a property.
And we listened to you the last time, the concerns were very well presented. And what is in front of you now is, it's still the same primary property. We have separated ourselves from the adjoining hotels. We have a separate entrance to just this property, so there's no tie to hotel, to the hotel, any of the. We have a separate management building at the entrance. We have maintenance buildings on property along the building dumpster sites. We have a dog park, small, but we have a dog walking spot. And there's landscaping, and so we made some modifications, trying to address the concerns that were expressed before. And I think we've got a really good solution going forward. Between the control points that we've got, the landscaping we've got, the concerns that were raised last time that I think we addressed. We're pretty excited about this project. Delighted to respond to your questions, or, Del can answer questions much better than I.
These improvements that you showed us here, how much of that is going to be done? What's your plan? How much of that is going to be done for the first RV pool segment?
It pretty much has to all be done. I just failed to mention, one of the other adjustments we made was that each parking space, it will have some pump station, water, electricity, so they're self-contained on each spot. So that has to be done before you can park anybody there. The whole infrastructure has to be replaced to start the project. The trees won't be as big as they're brought in.
Right, right.
But they'll be there. They may be, you know, this high, but they're going to be there.
Okay, I'll ask the city administrator, is a conditional use permit, it's, does it have a timeframe on it? And it's revocable, correct?
Yes, you can revoke.
It can be revoked for non-compliance. And who's, you know, my question is, who's going to police all of this? I can tell you the police department's got better things to do than police an RV park for violations. And I don't know that a code enforcement officer doesn't have better things to do.
So we will have a dedicated person 24/7 living in that registration building.
So you're telling me there's going to be a person in that building 24/7?
Right. That's what our plan is. So they're going to watch everything and make sure everything goes by rules. Plus, we will have all the rules when it, you know, registration card that we wrote down and they have to sign up on every, when they check.
And this city ordinance is standard for approval for conditional use permit, and that's what we're dealing with here. We're not, we're not dealing with your business savvy or anything like that. We're dealing with a permit for conditional use. It says, "In considering any application for a conditional use permit, the planning and zoning commission and city council may give consideration to the criteria listed below, to the extent they are pertinent to the particular application." This is in Section 26 of the zoning ordinance, city code. The character of the neighborhood, well, it's a central business district, so we want it to look nice, always. Compatibility with adjacent property uses in zoning. I think there's going to be some undue traffic congestion there, large vehicles pulling in and out of there. Suitability of the property for which a conditional use is being requested. Well, just the proximity of other businesses, where there's going to be a lot of traffic, like Taco Bell and things like that, there's fast food restaurants there that generate a lot of traffic. Extent to the, impact on the street system to handle traffic and or parking. Well, like I said, the large vehicles. Impact of noise pollution or other environmental harm. At one time, you talked about fire pits, but it looks like there's no wonder any fire pits. Well, that's a good thing. Potential negative impact on neighborhood property values. I'm getting a lot of complaints from people that, they're complaining about it. And if they have a valid reason or not, I'm not quite sure, you know, they just don't think it's the type of business that's appropriate for city limits and our central business district. And extent to, extent to which there is need of the proposed use in the community. Does our community, you know, when we make a decision, we have to do what's right for our community as a whole, not just what's right for one individual, one business, or one organization. We've been through that before with an organization. We couldn't give them what they wanted, and, you know, but we all learn to live with that. We have one in Passaic, we have one in Three Mile Corner, we have one in Adrian, Archie, Peculiar. They're just all over in rural areas. Now, a couple of them are kind of in town, the one in Adrian's outside the edge of town, one in Orange if you can see it from the highway, but. Anyway, I don't see that our community has a great need for a RV park. And I just don't see that it's going to generate that much business to our local stores and things like that. That's, but those are the things, and the economic impact on the community, I just don't think it's going to be that big a deal, but they're not going to pay, buy that much stuff, they're not. Anyway. Those are the things I have an issue with, just what it's going to look like in three years, five years from now. Who's going to police it when we have a violation? And, you know. I don't know where we need to go from here, but those are my issues. Those are my concerns.
What it's going to look like three to five years from now, it's better than it's going to look at when it starts. Your vegetation will grow.
What about the pictures that were presented of the one in, up north?
That was the.
But you said back there and told us you owned that.
Before 2006, I owned that, and I sold that property. I don't, you know, I don't own that.
But that's not what you said. You said, I own one. I own the one in Plac City.
I said I used to own that.
Yeah, he, he said he didn't own it. In 2006, he said he sold that.
I sold that in 2006. And then I moved to the Olay area, and I have established the business in the Olay area.
Well, apparently I didn't hear that, so.
I'm sorry about that, but that's what I meant.
When you made that statement, people went out there and checked it out. And that's why they did that. They were young people, they went up there. You said you owned it, so they went there to look at it.
I had experience with that, but I didn't mean that I still own that.
Well, those are my issues. I didn't know what else was, but weigh in on that. Any comments, any comments, questions?
So whatever's looked like, it's showing on the picture, so you can see that presenting the nice, nice-looking RV park all the way. Everything's landscaped nicely, and we have roads that bring the, the, the recreational vehicles over. There's lots of RV park on that, last, last page of the rules.
I'm the old guy that wants the VW buses out there.
Well, another thing I brought here a few weeks ago, it's on, the entrance, primary entrance will be on Sunset Drive. Will there not be an entrance from the motel, the Daisy motel?
No, there's any separate.
Well, down the street from that, behind Don Mailen's place, there's a city park. It's designated as a. designated as a park. It's not equipped in it yet, but we have designated that as a park. I don't know if it's 200 feet of an entrance, but that's a concern. But the corner of it edges that park, and I'm concerned about safety, child safety, things like that. Anyway, those are the issues I have.
So this is only 24 spots, so it will not be like in and out like a retail business.
I'm looking at this picture here.
For safety reasons, I mean, same as other businesses, it's a lot less than other occupancy business, like a Taco Bell or retail business. So it's, I mean, probably you see a few vehicles a day, you know, on a RV park, so that's.
People are here to park.
Yeah.
You know, they're not coming and going a lot. They're here to park, spend a night or two or three, and then be on their way.
So we're putting a park back there?
There's already a park there.
There is?
And for, and for any apartment, put a park there.
There's a place truck there.
On that northeast corner, right?
Yeah, almost behind Don Mailen's place.
Council's got more comments, questions. I guess as long as you need it to approve this application or deny it.
We're taking the public comment?
We had a public hearing.
Wait, but this wasn't hearing now?
No.
Oh, okay.
They do.
I move to deny the conditional use permit based on concerns with the impact on the street system and the potential negative impact on neighboring property values.
Second. And we got a motion and a second, we move roll call.
Okay. Rich? No. No one, no one approved.
Alkar?
No.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul?
I'm approving her denial, right? So I say yes, right? That's why I'm approving her to deny. So I'm voting yes to deny it.
That's what I'm voting for, yes.
Yeah, I, I got.
I'm voting no to deny it, this.
Yes, and I voted yes to deny it.
I got that. Yes, I know. Behringer?
Mallett?
To approve.
I think one thing we didn't look at, we didn't look at, didn't meet the requirements of the ordinance.
Have the question denied, then. Nice work. Okay, next on the agenda, the public hearing. To amend certain sections of chapter 26 regarding chickens and rabbits within residential zone districts. So we'll open the public hearing at this time, for comments on changing chapter 26. Any public comments on amending chapter 26 with regards to chickens and rabbits within residential zone districts? Okay, hearing done, we'll hold it in public hearing. Okay, we have bills, ordinance, resolution, policy, proclamation. The first is, is bill number 2023, day 05, to amend chapter 26. Anything to say?
This is the ordinance change in the zoning that will allow the raising of chickens and rabbits within any type of residential area.
Any questions? If not, there's been a motion for first reading by title only.
Motion.
Rich?
Well, I'll say yes. I have a problem with it being in every residential area. That was my only issue, but I think this should only be a residential one.
Let's get the vote on the first reading.
Yes, sir.
Rich, Alkar?
Yes.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul? Wayne Scott?
Yes.
Randall's?
Yes.
Behringer?
Mallett?
Bill number 2023, day 05, an ordinance of the Butler City Council amending a certain section under article four of chapter 26 zoning of the city's code of ordinances regarding the keeping of chickens and chickens and rabbits within residential zone districts. Okay, now you wanna ask some questions before we?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Okay. Do we have a motion for second reading by title only?
So you?
Second. Rich?
Yes.
Alkar?
Yes.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul? Wayne Scott?
Yes.
Randall's?
Yes.
Behringer? Mallett?
Yes.
Bill number 2023, day 05, an ordinance of the Butler City Council amending a certain section under article four of chapter 26 zoning of the city's code of ordinances regarding the keeping of chickens and rabbits within residential zone districts. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Second. Rich?
Yes.
Alkar?
Yes.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul? Wayne Scott?
No.
Randall's?
Yes.
Behringer? Mallett?
Yes.
And that's ordinance 1163. Is that, is bill number 2023, day 06? That's an ordinance allowing the chickens and rabbits. Everybody get a chance to look that over and get back. Do we have any questions or to stay? I don't hear any questions or comments, so do I have a motion for first reading by title only?
Second.
Rich?
Yes.
Alkar?
Yes.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul? Wayne Scott?
Yes.
Randall's?
Yes.
Behringer? Mallett?
Yes.
Bill number 2023, day 06, an ordinance of the Butler City Council amending certain sections under article one and two of chapter five of the city's code of ordinances regarding the keeping of chickens and rabbits within the city of Butler. Do I have a motion for second reading by title only?
Motion for second reading by title only?
Second.
Rich?
Yes.
Alkar?
Yes.
Liggins?
Yes.
Paul? Wayne Scott?
Yes.
Randall's?
Yes.
Behringer? Mallett?
Yes.
Bill number 2023, day 06, an ordinance of the Butler City Council amending certain sections under article one and two of chapter five of the city's code of ordinances regarding the keeping of chickens and rabbits within the city of Butler. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second. Rich?
Yes.
Alkar?
Yes.
Liggins?
No.
Paul? Wayne Scott?
No.
Randall's?
Yes.
Behringer? Mallett?
Yes.
Ordinance 1164.
Sorry, 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 sorry. A lot of chicken stuff, a lot of chicken stuff going, a lot of chicken stuff going.
Okay. Report, city clerk.
Okay, first of all, I want to report that we will be going through, the city office will be going through a shred. We do this every other year, get rid of all files that could be shredded. So we'll be doing that, I would have to make it mid-August. I've told the chair of the finance committee, August 1st, the auditors will be here to review the audit with us for this year, we've got the findings. On August 28th at 10:00 a.m., on the courthouse lawn, the tax sale will take place. Currently, the city has two items up on the tax sale. Lastly, I want to give my condolences to Mary Jo Cook's family. Mary Jo worked with us for several years here at the city, and was a word of wisdom to all of us. At some point in time, I think everybody was a Mary Jo's office.
That's right, yes, she was.
Asked her questions and getting advice and everything. So, Dwayne and Anthony, we give our condolences, her husband and son there. And then also, I had a chance before city council to talk to Tim Shree. He's a former employee, he's doing much better. He has a long road to recovery, but he's in good spirits and doing very well today. So, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Police chief.
Add patrol trucks in service now, with, we have graphics on it, probably in the next two weeks, some graphics on it to complement and match the white Tahoe's that we have. But other than that, it's in service, so we'll go on there.
Great. It looks good.
So the grant is going through, I don't know, have we got confirmation of approval yet?
I got a call today. I think we, sorry.
Thanks, bro.
I think we got, we know goodwill they've conferred. We asked for $90,000 of that grant, which, it's $70,000 would come for the grant, the other 20, we would have to come up with. They're still, they've assured me that we've gotten $50,000 of the $70,000. They're trying to find another $20,000 because we are at the end of the grant cycle, and so they're trying to find us the other $20,000. But they've assured me that we've gotten $50,000 of it yet. So we'll be able to at least get one new police vehicle.
Moving forward on that, also. See ya.
City attorney? City administrator?
I just have one thing. Don't forget that this Saturday, the chamber is putting on the car show and touch a truck on the square on Saturday, and I believe they also have a band. That's all.
Public works? Code enforcement?
Nothing at this time.
RG?
Nothing.
Okay, down to me. I want to second my condolences to Mary Jo's family. She was an excellent coworker and a, and a good friend, and we'll miss her.
Yes.
And I'm happy to, to see that Tim's doing good. I had to be on that call, and he wasn't looking well that day. So I'm glad that he is at least out of the hospital and, and doing a little better. Also, did Delbert get back?
No.
Did? Okay. Okay, well, we wish Delbert well in his recovery, and also condolences to the family of Wilbur Nichols that passed away. He was, he retired from the military, then he came to Butler. He was a police officer here. Shortly after he hired in at that, he moved up to police chief. Then he moved over to city administrator, might have been at that time called public works, superintendent, I think, maybe. And then he was elected as our police judge here before, before we used to have, have to have a lawyer do it. So he had a, he had a long history of service to the city of Butler.
Yeah, he did.
So we'll move on to council reports. Rich?
Same thing on Mary Jo. She was a good friend. She was my neighbor. She had a ring. They'll, they'll be missed. I hated to see them leave Butler, but they were good, good folks, and we'll miss them. I don't have anything to add other than that, sir. And Wilbur Nichols, he was a cool guy. If you knew Wilbur, you liked him. He lived a long, good life. So, that's all I have to say.
Alkar?
I don't have anything to say.
Liggins?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Wayne Scott?
Continued prayers for the Cook family, Tim Shree, and for Delbert. And I'd like to thank the city for sending me to the elected officials' training conference. Was very informative, but I'm glad I went. And also, I had a complaint on the fireworks the day before the fourth. I, I wasn't here. Did you guys adopt an ordinance that they could shoot them off the day before?
Yes.
Third and fourth, yes. But they were shooting on the second, too.
They were shooting the third when they first went on sale.
If you make a real people follow, you know.
Yeah, I understand.
Randall's?
I know that in your update, you said early August for the fire station roof. Do we have any more details?
No.
On what that means? And then the AMI, we're having issues with internet provider. What does that mean?
We were just having difficulty with the internet provider closing us out on the system, and they've, I believe that they have switched out routers, and it's improved.
Okay, so it was a equipment issue, not a provider, an internet issue, like they were?
Both, both of them. How about that? Yeah.
Okay.
And that was media company, right?
Yes.
Do we have an update on the ones that wanted pole attachments? The?
Socket.
Socket? Or whatever?
We have not heard anything.
No one was socketed.
Yeah.
Yeah, socket.
And then there was one before that.
Clear wave, never got it again.
Okay.
Mallett? Not too much, just wondering what the schedule's looking like on the street, baby?
Oh, let's see, by the end of July, the million should begin.
By the end of July?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
What did I say, beginning?
No, I think, I heard the beginning a while back. You know, a few months ago, I think it was looking at the beginning.
Yeah.
I mean, we're looking at the end of July to get started.
Right.
But it is coming, and.
Yes.
How many roads is there now, Mike? If you'd remind us that we're gonna be redoing? Do we have that?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, sorry, yeah. I understand there's a lot to keep track of, for sure. All right, but anyway, street work will be taking place. All right, that's all I got. Okay, new business, pressure washer for the parks and rec.
Okay, in your packet, there is a recommendation for the Parks and Rec Department to purchase a mobile pressure washer. This is a hot water pressure washer. It is a budgeted item. We had budgeted $14,000 for this, and the low bid and, or the, excuse me, the recommended bid, which is $1 higher than the second, or the lowest bid, came in from BCE Cleaning Systems, and this is a better unit, and it has a higher gallon per minute flow.
I know that they go with the recommendations of the director of public works, and even those a $1 different sizes, we that we know the BCE Cleaning Systems.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
The poll? Any questions?
No.
Need a motion, we're in the poll, second.
Make a motion, so we can.
In accordance with ours, one, six, one, oh, six, one, oh, dot, oh, two, one.